Good evening and welcome to the regular session for the Board of Education, May 3rd, 2017. All nine board members are present and so we will call the meeting to order. And tonight, the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Dethridge, if you'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please bear with me for our announcements. Just another reminder, this is my favorite week, May 8th through the 12th, is Teacher Appreciation Week. Be sure to show your support for our amazing educators during this time. Also, as I shared at our work session on Monday evening, the announcement of our student representative for the 2017-2018 school year was delayed until tonight's meeting because of the timing of the interviews of the top four finalist and difficulty in contacting them over the weekend. But I'm happy to share that announcement with you this evening. I was thrilled to have the privilege of serving as our board representative on the selection committee. The students who applied for this position are not just good students, but they are simply amazing people. As I shared before, we had a total of 14 applicants from nine different high schools. And after review and ranking by the committee, the top four candidates were moved through to the interview process. The four finalists, who are all rising seniors, were Lincoln Dillman of Karnes High School, Michelle Hee of Farragut High School, Kinley Coontz of West High School, and Carolyn Whitehead of Powell High School. I want to thank each of the finalists personally, on behalf of the committee and on behalf of the board. If these students are any indication of our world's future, I can assure you that we are in good hands. So let's give a round of applause to the four finalists. Following the interviews, the committee members totaled their interview scores with the application scores, and I'm happy to introduce to you our Board of Education Student Representative for 2017-18 from West High School, Kinley Coontz. We'll be sharing more detailed information about Kinley at our June board meeting when she joins us at the table with Sidney. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I said, "Gosh, I feel old." I had the pleasure of teaching Kinley when she was at Hall's Elementary School, so it's a special moment. Thanks for joining us, Kinley. We're very excited.
The only one I saw come in was Commission Chair Dave Wright. Oh, and Bud Armstrong back there, our county law director. Thank you for being here. And who else? Oh, and Commissioner Evelyn Gill. We are so privileged to have so many of y'all tonight. Thank you very much. So, changes to the agenda, but let me make some announcements for first board members. As discussed in our work session, items 6C-12, 6C-13, and 6C-14 were withdrawn. And also, you received information today regarding a rental agreement for the Bearden High School program via email, so that you will need, that will need to be added for our consideration as item C, 6C-27. Additionally, due to the withdrawal of the proposal from the Stars Nashville vendor, which was received by the Knox County Procurement Department late yesterday evening, item 9F has been withdrawn from the agenda out of necessity. Further, the Knox County Procurement Department has canceled the cultural competency training proposal as a whole pursuant to procurement division regulations. Another RFP will be issued as soon as practical with guidance from the board and the Knox County personnel. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Mr. Norman?
Thanks, Madam Chair. If there's no objection, I'd like to postpone item G in the policy section. It's F-150, new project planning for 30 days. If we don't have any objections.
Can you give me that number again? Item?
It's item G and policy F-150.
Okay, 7G, policy 150. Is there any objections? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with this change?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Okay. Did you wish to address that, Ms.?
I was going to remove an item, but we'll just get one and get there. It's okay.
Okay. Are you sure? Okay, then. Okay, so, motion is approved and passes. Okay, the favorite part of the evening, special recognitions. And it's my pleasure to introduce Bearden High School Principal, Dr. John Bartlett.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's my privilege to present two of our students as National Merit Finalists this year. Will Lewis, who's not here tonight because he's playing soccer for Bearden High School, is the son of Brad and Kerry Lewis. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is an all Knoxville and all-state soccer player, a youth soccer coach, and a certified referee for soccer and football, an AP Scholar with Distinction, and Bearden High School valedictorian. He plans to attend the University of Tennessee and study business analytics. And he's just a great kid. Juliana Pulsonelli, excuse me, is the daughter of Gary Pulsonelli and Linda Schilling. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, she is the president of Mu Alpha Theta and an AP Scholar with Distinction. She attended Governor's School for Computational Physics, received a silver medal in the National Latin Exam, is the head of the control systems for the robotics team, and has appeared in four Bearden Advanced Acting Shows. She is also a two-time category winner at her test center for the Tennessee Math Teachers' Association Competition and co-saluditorian. She plans to attend Princeton and study physics and electrical engineering, and she also is just a fantastic young lady. So those are our two National Merit Scholars. Juliana?
So, I'm getting ready to read a lot of names, and I'm kind of excited about that. But just for the sake of protocol, do they all come up at once? How do we want to do that? All right. So, they're at the end, we'll all come up at once. I'll read your names. I have worked really hard today on pronunciation, but it's possible I might mispronounce something, so bear with me. I'm Ryan Seabee, the principal of Farragut High School, and it is with great pleasure that I'm here today. The first student we would like to recognize is Raksha Dodabelli. Raksha is the daughter of Leitha Rogavan and Sudarshan Dodabelli. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, she is vice president of the United Nations Club, secretary of HOSA, and the National Honor Society, and a member of the Knox County Youth Health Board. She has a research internship in a UT Knoxville Genetics Lab where she is optimizing the RNA interference of the Sepharase protein. I probably mispronounced that, too. She received the Gold Key in Novel Writing in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards and the first place in veterinary science at the HOSA State Competition. She was also recognized as the best delegate at the SHS Model UN Conference. She plans to attend Duke University to study biology. The next student we'd like to recognize is Zaki Hussain. He's the son of Gamal and Desiree Hussain. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is the team captain of the Farragut Robotics Team Flagship 3140, winner of the 2017 Smoky Mountain Regional, and he made a perfect score on the ACT. He plans to attend UT Knoxville to major in mechanical engineering and physics. Amina Ikbal is the daughter of Farzana and Mohammed Ikbal. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, she is a U.S. Presidential Scholar Candidate and a National AP Scholar, a USA Biology Olympiad semifinalist, and made a perfect score on the ACT. She was a silver and bronze medalist on the National French Exam and won first place in anatomy and physiology portion of the Tennessee Science Olympiad. She plans to attend MIT to study biology. Next student is Omar Ikbal. He's the son of Farzana and Mohammed Ikbal. He is a National Merit Scholar and an AP Scholar. He plans to attend the University of Tennessee Knoxville to study computer science. Next student is Abe Ju. He's the son of Mewok Sin and Jaywok Ju. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is a National AP Scholar with Distinction, a Presidential Scholar nominee, and made a perfect score on the ACT. He won seventh place in the National Science Olympiad. He is a cross-country varsity letterman, won first place in the individual regional DECA competition, is vice president of Mu Alpha Theta State Club, and president of the Mu Alpha Theta School Club, president of the chess club, vice president of the TSA and DECA, and event coordinator for National Honor Society. He plans to attend Dartmouth College to study economics and finance. Thank you for the water, Terry. Sam Landon is the son of Gerald and Marlene Landon. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is an AP Scholar with Distinction, a secretary of Model UN. He also has internships with Fort Loudon State Historic Area and the Farragut-West Knox Chamber of Commerce. He plans to attend the University of Chicago to study anthropology. Next is Alex Levy. He's the son of David and Suzanne Levy. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he's an AP Scholar with Distinction, a two-time all-state bassoonist, and a Knoxville Symphony Youth Orchestra bassoonist, and a Project XQ semifinalist. He is a university scholar recipient at the University of Chicago, where he plans to study mathematics and economics. Nalan Varma is the son of Lori and Vinagopal Varma. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is an AP Scholar with Distinction and an Eagle Scout. He won a silver medal for Level 3 and Level 4 of the National French Exam. He was also a winner of the L&amp;M Train Bowl, the East Tennessee PBS Scholars Bowl, Tennessee State Science Olympiad, the 2017 Smoky Mountain Regionals, and a two-time winner of the Pelosippe State Regional Science Olympiad. He plans to attend the University of Maryland at College Park. The next student is Jerry Ju. He's the son of Juan Fang and Jai Lee. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is the president of the Science Club, state secretary of Mu Alpha Theta, captain of the tennis team, former president of HOSA, and a principal cellist of the Knoxville Symphony Youth Orchestra and Tennessee State Orchestra. He placed at the Tennessee HOSA State Conference in 2014, 2015, and 2016. He placed fourth at the National Science Olympiad Tournament. He placed eighth at the Mu Alpha Theta National Convention and served as Speaker of the House at Boise State. He plans to attend Yale University and study biology. Aiden Thomason is the daughter of Melissa and Robert Thomason. She's a member of the Student Government Association, the National Honor Society, and NAHS. She attended the 2016 Youth Education Summit in Washington, DC, and won a scholarship for her performances in debates. She was selected as girl state delegate and has had artwork displayed in the 2016-2017 East Tennessee Regional Student Art Exhibition. She made a perfect score on the ACT. She is undecided about both her college and major at this time. Hayden Allen is the son of Christopher and Lynette Allen. In addition to being a National Hispanic Merit Scholar, he is a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, the Latin Club, the Spanish Club, Technology Student Association, and an integral part of the Farragut Robotics Flagship Team 1340. He plans to attend UT Knoxville to study aerospace and mechanical engineering. Michael Lin is the son of Jun Lin and Ying Wang. He is recognized for winning the Senior Division of the Southern Appalachian Science and Engineering Fair with his project titled Identification of Volatiles Produced by Agrobacterium. He also won the Yale Science and Engineering Award and the Superintendent's Award, and is the state secretary of Mu Alpha Theta. He is undecided on his college and major at this time. I also have four students who could not make it that I'd like to share their names. Ava Victoria Ostrom is a National Merit Scholar. Lauren Feet is a National Merit Scholar. Lily Gow is a National Merit Scholar. Elliot Fang made a perfect score on the ACT. And Jackson Johnson is a National Merit Scholar. All of my incredible students, would you please join me on the stage at this time?
If each one of y'all want to come down, we can do a single photo instead of a group photo, so let's start with Raksha. Yeah, you can let her hold it. Got it. Zaki? Is Amina here? Omar isn't here either. Abe isn't here. Sam? Right here, where you get yours from Terry. Okay. Naylin?
Nalan.
Nalan, sorry.
3140.
Jerry? Got it? Hayden? Hayden Allen? Don't look jet lagged like you've been jet setting in Tulsa. Michael?
3140.
I'd also like to thank, I see there's a couple of our staff members that came to support them tonight, and just thank you all for being here.
My name is Salee Reynolds, and I'm here on behalf of Hardin Valley Academy to recognize two of our wonderful students. First of all, Chase Matt Leck is not able to attend tonight, but he is a National Merit Finalist. With us tonight is Rowan Palmer. Rowan is the daughter of Robert and Heather Palmer. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, she is the business team captain of the HVA RoHoctics First Robotics Team, the co-editor-in-chief of the yearbook, a seven-time state and regional gymnastic championship qualifier, a Region 8 gymnastic Eastern National Team member, an AP Scholar with honors, the HVA Homecoming Queen Runner-Up, and recipient of the Daughters of American Revolution Good Citizenship Award. She interned at the Oak Ridge National Laboratory and plans to attend Yale University to study mechanical engineering. Rowan Palmer.
One, two, three. Got it.
Good evening. I'm Becky Ash, the principal of the L&amp;N STEM Academy, and I am thrilled to introduce to you tonight the first-ever National Merit Scholar from the L&amp;N. Jacob Samar is the son of Janet and John Samar. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, he is also an AP Scholar with Distinction, a member of the all-district golf team, and winner of team district golf championships. He won second place in the PBS Talibide Scholars Bowl and fifth place in the State Science Bowl. He placed fourth and fifth place in Science Olympiad. He attended the Governor's School for Computational Physics and received a silver medal for the National Latin Exam. He will be attending the University of Tennessee Knoxville to study computer science, and he will be our fourth-ever valedictorian from the L&amp;N STEM Academy in a couple of weeks. Jacob?
I'm Ashley Jesse. I'm the principal of West High School, and so I'm going to do a thing a little bit different. I'm going to recognize each of mine separately, so we can take a picture of them separately for their recognition. The first one is Pu Xin Xinwen. She is the daughter of Mei Ling and Jay Gingrich. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, she's an all-state senior, president and founder of the West High School Chapter of the Girl Up Club, an associate justice of youth and government, captain of the Quiz Bowl team, and president of the student body. She attended Governor's School for Science. She's a recipient of the IB Higher Level Chemistry Award, a Vanderbilt Chancellor Scholar, and an intern at Long Chemical Group. She plans to attend Vanderbilt University to study chemistry, and she is an awesome girl. Let's recognize Pu Xin Xinwen.
Noah is the son of Gabriel and Shuley Mesa. In addition to being a national Hispanic scholar, he is the valedictorian of West High School. He's an AP Scholar with Distinction and an IB diploma candidate. He's president of Mu Alpha Theta, a member of the National Honor Society and the Society of Torch and Laurel. He's the founder of the Psychologist of West and was voted most likely to succeed. He attended Governor's School for Scientific Models and Data Analysis and was a participant of the National Congress Future Scientist and Technologist. He's a future Bonner Scholar. He plans to attend Rhodes College as a neuroscience major and a minor in biostatistics or philosophy. He is awesome, a student and person, and I am here to recognize Noah Mesa.
I am Wes Edmonds, the principal of Farragut Middle School, and I'm here to introduce Aditi Nanda and Kate Cho, who are here to be recognized for winning the Junior Division of the Southern Appalachian Science and Engineering Fair with their microbiology project entitled Germ Wars. These two incredibly young ladies are only in sixth grade, so I think there's a good chance we might see them back here in about six years as National Merit Finalists. So, Aditi and Kate, come on up.
Before our agenda items, Superintendent Thomas has some brief remarks that he would like to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, our Farragut community and our Knox County school system has experienced some recent losses in our and our hearts go out to those families. We've been very intentional about protecting our students, and we're not going to change that. I want the Board to know that Dr. Ryswick and Ms. Massey and I walked the halls today and spent some time at Farragut speaking to some students and some teachers today, and we were very impressed with how they're handling this and caring for each other. We are starting, feel like we're starting to see the healing begin. Uh, the support that the district has provided is always, and has always provided, is helping. We are working very closely with our community partners and mental health professionals to educate and find solutions to protect our students' health and well-being. Tomorrow night, there is a meeting with the parents at Farragut High School at 6:30, and I believe that that will help us to work with the community to begin the healing process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Cote?
Item Six, Consent Agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. DeThridge, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Ms. Owen, did you have a statement that you wanted to make about?
I did, but if it's on consent.
You can still make statements.
There are two items on the consent agenda that we just passed, um, six and seven. One is to approve an agreement with Knoxville Plumbing, Heating and Cooling Contractors facilitating a post-secondary apprenticeship program at Lincoln Park Technology and Trade Center. The second is to approve an agreement with Resource Valley Construction Training Council Contractors facilitating a post-secondary apprenticeship program at Lincoln Park Technology and Trade Center. And, um, I just want everyone to know that this is a hugely kept secret, that we have Lincoln Park Technology Center. Uh, it's, we have had this adult apprenticeship program, at least in the electrical field that I know of, and the only reason I know this is because I went to their certificate program last night. And they've been there since 1986 in some building in Knox County schools, and they are very thankful to us for providing a location for them to be able to have their apprenticeship program. Um, in the electrical fields, their apprentices are required 144 hours of classroom time and 2,000 hours of apprentice work every year for four years. Um, if, if they miss any of that time, they don't move on to the next year, and they are, they are very serious about it. Um, these gentlemen range in age, anywhere from just out of high school to, um, my age and up. So, so they are anywhere from, you know, nineteen to in their fifties. And they are very dedicated to their program. Last night, um, there were about 25, uh, folks who have finished all four years. So they've done 144 hours of classroom instruction for four years, and 8,000 hours of apprentice hands-on work with their, um, with their cooperating employer. So it is a, it's a huge, um, resource for our community. And since losing our money from the state for adult education, their cost has significantly increased to have this contract with us. And though they say that they still feel very fortunate, um, if there is any way we could find any way to reduce their cost, they would hugely appreciate it. I think it went up about $9,000 this year, uh, for each of those. So anything that we could do, they would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, I think what you shared was very valuable. Information that the whole Board needed, did I, Ms. Cote?
Yes. Item Seven A, approve second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy E121 Fire and Safety Regulations.
Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Oh, sorry, I didn't ask for any discussion. I don't see any, does anyone, okay. Motion carries.
Item Seven B, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E122 Emergency Preparedness Plan as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven C, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E172 Agreement for Pupil Transportation Services as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven D, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E180 Use of School System-Owned or Leased Vehicles as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven E, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E190 Food Service Management as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven F, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy F130 Retirement and Disposal, Disposal of Facilities as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item Seven G was postponed. Seven H, approve second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy F160 Recommendation of Architects, Involvement of Architects.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Ms. Roundtree, yeah. Okay, and seconded by Mr. Norman. All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Seven I, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C180 Advertising and Solicitation in Schools as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven J, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E173 Private Vehicles for Transporting Students as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven K, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G130 Employee Complaints and Grievances as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven L, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G131 Complaints About School Personnel as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven M, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G140 Staff-Student Relations as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Seven N, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G150 Staff-Community Relations as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven O, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G180 Personnel Files as amended.
Motion to put this off for four, uh, thirty days?
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by, um, Jennifer, and seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion to put this off for thirty days?
I'll just say, this is the one that I was gonna talk about at the beginning that I missed.
Okay.
And it's no biggie, I just wanted some time.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Motion carries. To put it off for thirty days.
Thank you.
Seven P, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G190 Salary Deductions as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven Q, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G200 Academic Freedoms as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven R, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G220 Harassment of Employees as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven S, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G230 Personnel Definitions as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Seven T, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G240 Compensation Guides and Contracts for Professional Personnel as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven U, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G280 Qualifications and Duties of Teachers as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven V, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G290 Hiring Personnel as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven W, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G310 Job Sharing as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Seven X, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G330 Tenure as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Eight A, approve local consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for federal Title I, Title II-A, and Title III funding for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $15,865,786.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this particular item? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item Eight B, approve consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for Special Education Services in the amount of $13,276,211 for preschool special education services in the amount of $305,604 for fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree. Second by Ms. DeThridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight C, approve application and receipt of funds in the amount of $5,000 from Oak Ridge Associated Universities for a 2017 Extreme Classroom Makeover Contest Grant for creation of a full makerspace in the STEM lab at Shenondale Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight D, approve amendment to the Cooperative Agreement with the Federal Highway Administration approved by Board on October 1, 2014, for the Garrett A. Morgan Technology and Transportation Education Program Grant for the purpose of adding and/or replacing key personnel listed on the agreement at no cost to the Knox County schools.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item Eight E, approve memorandum of understanding with digital promise for the 2017-2018 school year for continuation of innovative learning environments projects at Bearden and Carter Elm, uh, Middle Schools, as supported by grants from Verizon Corporate Resources Group LLC and Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight F, approve request of Sarahmore Green Magnet Academy for installation of a disc golf course on the school grounds using donations from Knoxville Disc Golf Association, Home Depot, Knox County Public Works, Volcan Materials, and the Great Schools Partnership, with an estimated value of $9,885, and in-kind donations from staff members with an estimated value of $1,000.
Motion made by Ms. DeThridge, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight G, approve application and receipt of funds from a Great Smoky Mountains National Park Grant for Lawnsdale Elementary School for reimbursement of $500 for the cost of buses for a third-grade field trip on May 3, 2017.
Motion by Ms. DeThridge, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Eight H, approve receipt of funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for Read-to-be-ready summer grants for Green Magnet Academy, Lawnsdale Elementary School, and Sarahmore Green Magnet Academy as I-zone schools for rising first graders in the amount of $41,326, and for Lawnsdale Elementary School for rising second and third graders in the amount of $43,030, and for Sarahmore Green Magnet Academy for rising second and third graders in the amount of $31,734.20.
Motion by Ms. DeThridge, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Eight I, approve Air Force Association 2017 Educator Grant for Powell Elementary School STEM Programs in the amount of $250.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight J, approve request of Hardin Valley Elementary School to purchase and install playground equipment at a cost of $51,385.71 using Hardin Valley Elementary School donations funds in the amount of $31,385.71, and internal school funds in the amount of $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hill, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, Ms. Horn, knew that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Eight K, approve receipt of funds from a URS-CH2M Oak Ridge LLC Education Mini-Grant in the amount of $750 for Bearden High Schools, using Swivel to enhance mathematics inside and outside of the classroom project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Nine A, approve contract between the Knox County Schools Maintenance Department and Bruce Terminix Company Incorporated to provide termite control services for up to $120,000 annually.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. DeThridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Nine B, approve contract between the Knox County Schools Maintenance Department and HydroTech Incorporated to provide water treatment chemical services for cooling towers and boilers, up to $60,000 annually as needed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. DeThridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Nine C, approve contract with Premier Food Equipment Service for provision of kitchen equipment, preventative maintenance, and repair.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms., uh, Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Nine D, approve contract with TNT Produce Company for provision of fresh produce for Knox County school nutrition.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Nine E, approve contract with IC System Incorporated for provision of collection services for Knox County schools.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Item Nine F was withdrawn. Ten A, approve special courses for high school curriculum for school year 2017-2018, Introduction to Animation Simulation and Motion Graphics, and Advanced Animation Simulation and Motion Graphics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Public Forum is next, Miss, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have thirteen speakers signed up for a public forum this evening, and I-
and I'd just like to remind you all to, when you come to the podium, to state your name and county and that you have five minutes. Our first speaker this evening is Crystal Yamazaki. I hope I pronounced that correctly. I apologize if I didn't. You can go ahead and begin.
Hello, my name is Crystal Yamazaki, and I'm here today because I would like to talk about the importance of supporting transgender youth in our schools and in particular, the need for Knox County Schools to establish trans-inclusive restroom policies. My daughter attends school in Knox County. Unlike every other student at her school, my daughter is prohibited from entering the restroom that corresponds with her gender. She is forcibly segregated from her female peers and denied access to restroom facilities. She would like to use the girls' restroom like all her friends do, but she isn't allowed to because Knox County Schools is uncomfortable with the fact that she is transgender. I would like to share with you today some of our experiences with these restroom policies and explain how denying restroom access to transgender children is psychologically damaging, misguided, and completely unnecessary. My daughter's sex assigned at birth is only one very small part of who she is, but to Knox County Schools, this seems to be the only part of her that matters. She knows that her school doesn't accept her for who she is, but she doesn't understand why. She is scared to use the restroom at school out of fear of being punished, and being singled out and barred from the girls' restroom makes her feel sad and embarrassed. She worries there are cameras in and near the restroom so that the school can spy on her. I've had to go to the school multiple times to personally check the restroom for cameras to put her mind at ease. She has frequent accidents from trying to hold in her urine and bowels all day. No child should have anxiety about something as simple as using the restroom, yet Knox County Schools is ensuring just that by policing my daughter's restroom use. Lack of acceptance and support is a very serious problem among transgender youth. Over forty percent of transgender individuals will attempt suicide. Research shows that depression and suicidality among transgender individuals are not a direct result of being transgender, but instead a result of being mistreated by others for being transgender. When transgender youth suffer from depression or attempt suicide, this is a direct result of the harassment and abuse they have suffered at the hands of others. It is a direct result of the discrimination they face in public spaces, including in their schools. It's important for Knox County Schools to understand that when you reject a child's core identity, when you segregate a child from their peers, when you tell a transgender child, "Your existence is not welcome here," you are effectively creating mental health issues in this child that wouldn't be present otherwise. The transgender community does not pose a risk to others in restrooms. Transgender people enter restrooms for the same reasons everyone else does. They use the toilet, wash their hands, and then leave. Many school districts around the country have implemented trans-inclusive restroom policies, and what we've learned from these schools is that trans-inclusive restroom policies do not allow, encourage, or result in increased sexual assaults. Rather, trans-inclusive restroom policies result in improved mental health among transgender students as well as a more positive and community-like learning environment for all. The issue of restroom access is about the right and ability of transgender individuals to exist in public spaces. My daughter and all transgender kids have just as much a right to a public education as any other child. My daughter and all transgender kids have just as much a right to access public facilities, including school restrooms, as any other child. Yet Knox County Schools chooses to deny transgender students these rights. Every day my daughter attends school, she is reminded that the grownups around her don't accept her and don't care about her. She asked me recently, "All the other girls get to use the girls' bathroom. How come I can't?" She asks me why her school is doing this to her, why they are bullying her, and I don't have answers for her. No child should be subjected to the abuse and indignities that my daughter is being subjected to at school every single day. I told her I would be coming here today, and I asked her if there was anything she'd like me to tell you. This is what she said. "I belong in the girls' bathroom because I am a girl." I am transgender, and there is nothing wrong with that. The rationale for barring transgender students from restrooms is based in ignorance. I implore you to prioritize the health, safety, and dignity of transgender students over the irrational fears, misinformation, and bigotry of others by implementing trans-inclusive restroom policies in Knox County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder. Just a friendly reminder, we do have thirteen speakers, so if everybody would be respectful of each person's five minutes. We have, our next speaker is Pastor Chris Battle. And remember to state your name and your county, please.
Good evening, I'm Elder Chris Battle, Knox County. I'm the pastor of Tabernacle Baptist Church and also the co-president of Justice Knox. And I would like the members of Justice Knox that are here just to please raise their hand. Justice Knox is an interfaith collaboration of congregations throughout Knoxville that have gathered together to do justice. In a series of forty house meetings last fall, members gathered to talk about what makes us angry about our community and what worries us. Person after person from congregation, from various parts of Knoxville, were angry about the inequalities in education. They were angry about inequalities because of race, poverty, and disability. They were angry about inequalities in educational outcomes. Many kids cannot read and do not have basic skills. They were angry about inequalities in discipline. Too many kids are suspended from school, and minority kids are overrepresented in alternative schools. When we gathered as congregations last November to share stories from the house meetings, two hundred and thirty leaders from more than fourteen congregations voted overwhelmingly to choose education as the justice issue to begin researching and taking action on this year. In fact, while all members present had two votes among five different issues, members of our own congregation chose to put all of our votes into education. In December, we began a research process to narrow the problem to a piece that we could begin to address. Almost fifty people from our congregations joined the Education of Research Committee. They read and analyzed Your Disparities Report, the report from ten years ago, and the independent studies that have been completed about Knox County Schools over the past years. They sought guidance and listened to educators from within our congregations. They conducted research interviews with community advocacy groups, members of our Your Disparities Task Force, district employees, law enforcement, and experts in other communities who have addressed educational problems successfully. As the research progressed, we had to make a choice between focusing on disparities in achievement and disparities in discipline. After initial research, we made the decision to focus on discipline knowing that ineffective and harsh discipline practices directly affect achievement. Members of our research committee were very upset to learn that students were being arrested at school for minor offenses like disorderly conduct. Stories which sounded like violations of school rules dressed up as criminal behavior. Other communities are solving these problems with aggressive adoption and implementation of proven strategies to manage classrooms more effectively and to restore relationships in school. Last week, more than twelve hundred people from more than twenty congregations in our community gathered at Justice Knox First Nehemiah Action Assembly to say with one voice that our teachers and administrators need these strategies and tools. Our children who are being cast out of school and into the pipeline to prison need these strategies. We gathered to ask you, our school board members, to actively educate yourself about these strategies and to advocate for them, and we will continue to make that ask. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Courtney Shea.
My name is Courtney Shea. I live in Knox County, and I serve on the Committee for Education Research described by Pastor Battle. Our research identified school systems that have succeeded in reducing harsh discipline actions while still creating a more positive and orderly school culture. These school systems used a proven model known as Whole School Change Restorative Practice, developed by the International Institute of Restorative Practice. And the plan that the Knox Board adopted last spring included implementation of restorative practices in all schools over a three-year period. A pilot project this year, high schools in the upcoming year, and then middle and elementary schools the following year. Five pilot schools have begun, but they have not completed this training and implementation practice. We also learned that your school district staff has identified the same International Institute of Restorative Practices Model as the most effective model to implement. And suspensions in the district are slightly down this year, although disparities based on race, poverty, and disability have generally remained the same. Fulton High School, the school that has most fully implemented the International Institute of Restorative Practices Model, is the only school in the district that has shown success in reducing both suspensions and disparities. And today we ask, and our action we asked, that you as school board members develop a deeper understanding of this model for restorative practice and that you advocate for effective implementation to change the culture of our schools and improve the lives of our children. We specifically asked today that each of you commit to visiting Fulton High School. Visit a restorative practice circle so you can have a fuller understanding of how this program works and its potential for our community. At our action last week and today, we asked that school board members advocate for full funding at each of the five pilot schools for training all staff and teachers according to the model that your staff has recommended. Following our Nehemiah Action last week, Melissa Massey contacted us to give us more details about the efforts by the principals to ensure that this full training will take place. She and Jeffrey Wright are still providing us with information, but it's our understanding that four of the five pilot schools are on track to complete full training in the model of restorative practice this coming school year. And this is a great start. At our action last week, we asked that school board members advocate for a phased and sustainable implementation plan for restorative practice, developed in consultation with and evaluated by Certified International Institute for Restorative Practice Consultants. And we learned that Jeffrey Wright has become a certified trainer with this International Institute, and he's working with them to develop a phased implementation plan. Ms. Massey has given us a commitment that she will share the implementation plan with Justice Knox leaders. At this point, the plan does not include costs. And today, we urge the school district to develop an implementation plan that includes costs. Until you consider the costs of implementation, there is no viable plan. And finally, it's our understanding this summer, district staff will present new discipline policies to the board that will have an emphasis on restorative practice. We urge you as a board to vote in favor of revisions to discipline policies and guidelines which will enable our schools to carry out the changes in culture and discipline envisioned by restorative practices. And on a personal note, until May twelfth, you can vote with USA Today for Central High School's video and proposal for trying to get a grant for additional ELL resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reverend John Mark Wiggers.
Good evening, I'm John Mark Wiggers. I'm from Knox County. I'm the pastor at St. James Episcopal Church and the other co-president with Pastor Battle of Justice Knox. So I conclude Justice Knox's remarks tonight by telling you that our members were excited to find that whole-school restorative practice was being looked at by the district. We're excited because our research has shown that that is something that works to reduce suspensions as well as flatten the disparity among those suspensions. And while it's easy to get excited about a program, it's harder to sustain it by giving it the resources that it requires and needs to succeed. The effective model and restorative practice requires training and follow-up for entire school staffs, not just a few administrators. And we urge you to follow up on this and make sure this is done well and not halfway. And we name that because also from our research, we learned that ten years ago, there was a proposal presented addressing issues of discipline and suspension, and pretty much not much has changed. So we realized that this school district, like other school districts, like many institutions, has a history of starting programs and introducing new ideas without adequate follow-up and commitment so that those things continue, especially things that are actually working and make a difference. So we're asking that you don't let that happen in this instance. Do not let another ten years go by with little or no changes in the way we discipline our students and the outcomes we get there. So use our money, all of our money, well for something that works so that our students and our entire community can reap the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Fells.
My name is Charles Fells. I'm a former state prosecutor in this courthouse. I'm a former federal prosecutor in the federal courthouse across the street. And I stand before you to say that every time our community locks up a kid in school and takes them away in handcuffs in front of their peers and puts them in a squad car and takes them to jail, we start recruiting for the gangs. Every arrest in public school helps the gangs. There has to be a better way. There is a better way. You have before you a specific proposal for that better way. And for the sake of our children and to put the gangs out of business, I hope you will embrace these proposals as swiftly as humanly possible. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carl Getino.
Carl Getino and Justin Samter Getino, Knox County. Let me start by saying what a wonderful display this evening of students, intelligent students, and what diversity was shown. I'd like to take a few seconds to recognize my son, who is not a scholar, but he will be graduating in two weeks. Justin has been a Knox County student since he was... Justin has been a Knox County student since he was three, and now he's 22. So we've been with the system for 18 years. He has attended Fort Sanders School, Bluegrass Elementary, Rocky Hill, Ayea Lots, West Valley Middle School, Bearden High School, West High School, and Ridgedale Alternative School. He has an immigrant mother, and he is an immigrant student. But what is important to say is that it took a long time for us to find a program for him. I have to commend his teachers. I wrote an article when he was little that was entitled "It Takes a Village," and it does take a village. There are too many teachers, but I want to mention Caroline Hill, Martha Iroff, Mrs. Grease, Mr. Coe, Mr. Villes, some administrators, therapists, teaching assistants, too many to name. Justin, when he was in kindergarten, he was mainstreamed. That was the word of the time. Then we called it inclusion, thanks to teachers, regular education teachers like Ms. Gordon and Ms. Loon. Through elementary, science was his favorite subject, and one of his accomplishments is to score in 70% on modified content in science in fifth grade. When he was in middle school, he spent 50% of the time in regular educational classes, mostly electives and science. When he got to high school, he was placed in a CDCA class and started to work more on daily living skills. He no longer could go to science because students had to do labs, and there was a required test about lab safety that he couldn't take with modifications. So that year also, he started talking. He now uses a device to talk, and he also developed severe behavior problems. That is the reason that he has spent the last five years at Ridgedale Alternative School. I thank every day, I thank God, and I thank Knox County School System that there is the Ridgedale, because as we graduate and exit, there will not be an alternative Walmart, there will not be an alternative healthcare, you know, health department. So this is it. We were giving a gift through special education. He, well, he was a student in Ridgedale. He worked for three years delivering mail at the AJ building, and we will be asking for a letter of recommendation because he's going to need it. He's not going to have a high school diploma. He's probably going to have an occupational diploma. If I had a dollar for every time I have heard Judge Erwin in juvenile court that students need to stay in school and earn a high school diploma because they won't be able to support their families, well, I'm standing here today for my son and those 70% of graduating seniors with intellectual disabilities who will be sitting at home next year. 70%, that's Indicator 14, State Department of Education. 90% to 95% of people with autism are unemployed or underemployed. So I'm urging you to look in depth into cultural competency because this is what it's going to take. All means all, and no more you're not allowed in science class. All means all.
Our next speaker is Andre Canty. Andre, are you here? I don't see him. Our next speaker is Carl Wheeler.
Good evening to all, and I thank the committee for allowing me to speak. I've spoken several times in the past. This time, I've got two basic topics. We're talking about this training to deal with these DEO issues that are facing us as a community, that are facing us as individuals, parents, and teachers alike. You know, when we talk about cultural competency training and all the things that we need to do in this school to reduce the DEO disparities, we have to look at the whole system. We can't look at this right hand. We've got to look at both hands. We've got to look at the entire program, and that means parents, teachers, students, what is it systemically that we're doing that is causing these high rates of disparities to show up in our documentation? The other piece of this is that when we look at the whole system, we look at the schools, we look at the students, we look at the teachers, we look at the parents. And on the other end, this gentleman just spoke a couple minutes ago from the justice side of things and talked about what he believes, and I certainly agree with him in terms of pipeline to prison issues. The thing that we have to do also is look at this memorandum of understanding that we have with our police department and our county sheriff, because the moment you introduce an officer in a situation at school, the odds are that he's going to be taken out and begin that pipeline to prison this gentleman was talking about a few minutes ago. So how do we impact that? We look at this thing we call the MOU. We have talked and talked and talked about this MOU. I have been told personally by Mr. Thomas's predecessor that a draft copy of that would be prepared by the monthly meeting, regular meeting in April. That has come and gone. No one has seen this through the, that I'm aware of, through the task force, the steering committee, excuse me. So I urge you, Mr. Superintendent, and your staff, to include the public in the development of this new MOU. Include the public, and you have, and I commend you for that, for those of us who serve on these various discipline subcommittees. Okay? That is something that is very useful, and it needs to be expanded to include the memorandum of understanding. And the last thing I would like to say to you, Mr. Superintendent, we're still waiting to meet with you.
Speaker is Amelia Parker. I don't see Ms. Parker. Our next speaker then is Lance McCold.
Good evening. I'm Lance McCold. I live in Knox County. I wanted to say just briefly to you today that we, I think I mentioned last month, that the school district has started something really good. They've started actually engaging with the community around issues. I've been hanging around the school district for six years, and every, all the time, the board has been encouraging the superintendent to engage with the community. Well, you have the community with you and ready to engage, and the district has actually engaged with people from Stop School Push Out and inviting them to take part of some of the committees that are doing the work, and that's a really good example. Behind us, we have people with Justice Knox who want to do, who are also concerned about issues around the schools, and I would encourage the administration and the school board to encourage the administration to include them in the preparations, the ways that we're going to solve these problems. It's not always going to be easy. It's complicated. We come from, we have, the staff and the citizens have sort of different cultures, different expectations, but that's the way we're going to solve these things. So that's what I want to do.
Our next speaker is Brianna Rosenbaum.
Thank you for your time and consideration today. My name is Brianna Rosenbaum. I'm a mother of a child in Knox County Schools, particularly Sequoia Elementary's first grader. And I also urge the board today to consider trans-inclusive bathroom policies. As part of that, I'm also an attorney, and I thought it would be most helpful to read from a brief in the case of Gloucester versus the minor G.G. This was the case challenging the school board's bathroom policy in Gloucester County, New Jersey. In particular, I think that's helpful because there, a group of medical associations, medical associations, professionals, doctors, et cetera, listed the medical consensus and scientific evidence concerning the treatment of transgender adolescents, and specifically, the impact of that board's policy and the fact that it undermines the health of transgender citizens and particularly minors. And I think as the board considers these policies, it's helpful to actually know the scientific evidence and the consensus. So I'm just going to read from a few snippets, and I urge you to actually read this brief, and I'm happy to, if you reach out, to provide you links to this information. Medical science recognizes the reality of transgender identity and the importance of supporting transgender persons in living healthy lives consistent with their gender identity. Gender identity is a person's inner sense of belonging to a gender, to a particular gender. It is an innate, deeply felt and core component of human identity. Everyone has a gender identity, and for their sex assigned at birth, and for most people, their gender identity is consistent with their sex assigned at birth. Transgender people, however, have a gender identity that is different from the sex they were identified at birth. The medical diagnosis of gender dysphoria refers to the often severe emotional distress resulting from this difference. All major professional associations of medical and mental health providers recognize that having a gender identity that differs from a person's sex assigned at birth is not in itself a disorder, but the associated distress is a medical condition requiring appropriate treatment that affirms the person's gender identity. According to the established medical consensus, the only effective treatment for the disabling experience of gender dysphoria is to provide medical and social support to enable the transgender person to live authentically based on his or her core identity. The protocol for gender transition is well-established and highly effective. Social transition involves bringing a person's gender expression and gender role into alignment with their gender identity. It may include wearing clothes associated with one's gender identity, using a different name and pronouns, and interacting with peers in one's social environment in a manner matching the person's gender identity. The support consists of affirming a person's gender identity and supporting their efforts to live, for young people, as the girl or boy they know themselves to be, including by referring to them with the appropriate pronouns and treating them as one would any other boy or girl. In contrast, rejecting the person's identity demeans the individual and exacerbates the dysphoric condition, leading to serious negative health conditions. In particular, because young people spend so much time at school and because schools play such a major role in a person's development, the failure of schools to support a student who has undergone gender transition can have predictably devastating emotional and developmental consequences. Schools have an obligation to protect the health of all their students. A supportive school eases the social challenges of gender transition and sets an example that stigmatizing gender students is not to be tolerated. A school that denies support for gender students undermines their health and well-being. The school board's policy of denying transgender students access to the same restrooms used by other boys and girls marks these students as different and unworthy of equal treatment. The stigma caused by such discrimination makes it much more difficult, and in some cases impossible, for the adolescent dealing with gender dysphoria to resolve their distress and, with the help of their healthcare providers, to make progress towards successful treatment. Because schools play such a major role in students' lives, the impact of a discriminatory school policy is significant. That discriminatory treatment is harmful, contrary to contemporary scientific understanding of transgender health, and based on unsupported fears and stereotypes that have no place in our society or system of law. Again, I also urge the board to consider trans-inclusive restroom policies.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Burchett.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Lindsay Burchett, Knox County. I am the mother of three children, one which is transgender. I think the reason that most of us are here is the safety of our children. I think that we've missed the mark on how important it is to keep all children safe. Decisions need to be made based on facts and not fear, especially when it comes to the well-being of underage children who cannot make changes for themselves. We are their voices. We are their protection, and we are their advocates. 83% of teachers, when polled recently, believe that they have a responsibility to ensure a safe learning environment for trans students, and yet 75% of trans students feel unsafe at school. Let's make sure that we're enabling these teachers not only to protect their students, but to be a positive influence on the other students around their trans students in their classes and in their programs. Every time you escort a trans child to a special bathroom, or you force a child, a little girl, in a sparkly dress to the boys' room, you are outing them. How many times a day is a child outed at school? This perpetual reminder that a child has been labeled "other" is noticed by other children. It's noticed by them. Otherness leads to bullying, isolation, sometimes violence. This likely explains why trans children consistently have lower grades and higher dropout rates than their peers, regardless of home life. If we want our students to thrive in an educational environment, and there's a simple solution to clear that path, why would we not clear it? The adults set the tone for the treatment and inclusion of the children. This is not state rights. This is human rights. I don't want to believe that a misinformed policy is more important than a child. Hundreds of school districts around the country allow transgender students to use facilities based on their gender identity. There is zero data of any kind to support the contention that this undermines the safety of the rest of the student body. What informed reasons do we have to exclude children? The Knox County School System's tagline on their website is "Excellence for Every Child." Some excerpts from mission statements of schools around the county are: Providing a safe learning environment. A respectful learning environment fosters open-minded, caring young people. A supportive, dynamic learning environment challenges every child to meet high expectations and therefore succeed in a diverse society. Safe learning environment. Fostering open-mindedness and caring in preparation for a diverse society. Excellence for every child. Every child. If allowing a trans child to use the bathroom with which they identify is, as statistics repeatedly show, harming no one, and allowing them to go through their day less distracted and less distraught and happier, healthier helps them learn and helping, and I'm sorry, and also helps their peers accept them. Why does that not encompass all of those mission statements combined? Knox County has endured too much loss this past year. I hope and pray this board does everything they can to prevent more loss. I hope and pray that you choose to stand with your at-risk students. Safety and inclusivity for every child, that would be excellence.
Our last speaker is Persephone Webb.
Good evening. I'm Persephone Webb of Knox County. I'm a director of PFLAG Merrillville, vice president of the Foothills LGBT Center, and vice president of the Trans Empowerment Project, and a transgender woman. I am here on behalf of the transgender youth that are attending Knox County K-12 schools. Transgender students are being denied basic dignities while at school. This treatment is evidenced by the actions of peers, teachers, and administrators. One manifestation of this is the restroom policy that is currently in place. Transgender students are not being permitted to use the restroom that corresponds with their gender. Instead, they are told to use a staff restroom or whichever Instead, they are told to use a staff restroom or whichever corresponds to their gender assigned at birth. Here's why this supposed solution is detrimental. If a student is segregated into a staff restroom, the message the school is sending is that they are different and do not belong. This physical isolation and special treatment can easily be extrapolated to insinuate mistrust or any other number of negative connotations. If a student is forced to use the restroom that does not correspond to their gender identity, the message again is that the child is wrong for being who they are and that society does not need to tolerate them. Either scenario can also have the consequence of outing the child against their will. This can lead to increased instances of bullying, and it is statistically known that transgender children are bullied at much higher rates than their peers. No student should be forced into a position where they need to justify their existence to anyone, be they teachers, their peers, or whoever, while simply trying to attend school. The psychological effects of not affirming a child's gender are well-studied and documented by numerous reputable institutions. Policies such as this cause anxiety, fear, confusion, and can lead to depression and other very serious and very real problems such as suicide. This is not hyperbole or speech intended to melodramatically shock. These things do happen and are preventable with the right approach. Here are just a few of the organizations which have policies and studies contradicting the current practice. The Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Psychological Association, the American College of Osteopathic Pediatricians, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Academy of Family Physicians, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Public Health Association, the American School Counselor Association, the Association of Medical School Pediatric Department Chairs, the National Association of School Psychologists, the National Association of Social Workers, the Endocrine Society, the World Professional Association of Transgender Health. My concern here is not focused solely on transgender students. The practices put in place and the attitudes which are enforced affect all within a school. Policies become indicators for how students should treat others and how parents should treat their children and how people in general should consider the rights of others. Your lead is being followed. I have deep concerns that there is an unwillingness to work together and take this issue seriously. Attempts to have dialogue have been dodged with the repetition of generic platitudes which do not address the problems or offer solutions. The LGBT community does not see its role here as one of conflict. Our questions and concerns are not some sort of trap. We simply see a problem and want to work with the system to make everyone comfortable and safe. The current policy of discrimination cannot continue. It contradicts decades of medical and psychological research and has been proven to cause serious harm to children. It is the board's responsibility to work with all concerned parties to foster an environment that is affirming and receptive to the needs of transgender children and all involved. Don't make the mistake of dismissing this and thinking that it doesn't cause actual direct harm to children. Ignorance is no longer an excuse when it comes to doing the right thing for transgender youth. I and my organizations are more than willing to work with everyone here to start dialogues, help educate, and address the questions and concerns of administrators, teachers, parents, and students. Please reach out to us. Please involve us. Please let us help to make sure that children no longer needlessly suffer just for coming to school.
There, that concludes public forum. Move adjourn.
Ms. Roundtree moved to adjourn with no objection. Meeting is adjourned.